Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton County Council Meeting of December 14th, 2017, to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Ms. Zembo, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr. Dees?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Geisinger?
Present.
Mr. Crayette?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Okay, we have two absent this evening, or afternoon. First item is the approval of the minutes of the December 7th, 2017, and December 6th.
Move to approve by acclamation.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Geisinger, seconded by Mr. Kraft, to approve by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, moving on. First is courtesy of the floor. I don't have a list of sign-ins, but I know I have some people that wish to speak. First up, I believe we have someone here from the State Theater. You could state your name and your business.
Will do. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Denise Smith, Vice President of Development from the State Theater. Thank you for allowing me to be first up especially. It is a show night at the State Theater, so gotta get back to work.
The show must go on.
The show must go on. Carpenter's Christmas, you know, we gotta keep everybody in the spirit, good holiday spirit. And first of all, while I do, while I am here, I feel like I would be remiss if I just didn't, on behalf of Shelley Brown and everyone from the State Theater, our board, our staff, our volunteers, just extend a thank you to Northampton County. Especially, we have been a recipient of a hotel tax grant for a number of years now, and I guess I just wanted to make it really clear that we are very appreciative of that, and those funds really do make a difference in our operations. So, thank you very much. I'm sure you are all aware that as the market has changed for arts and entertainment in the last, you know, five to seven years, it's become increasingly competitive, and that really has had an impact on the State Theater's bottom line. But I'll tell you what, that said, we are energized. Shelley has, continues to book robust schedules every year. Tickets are selling pretty well. This year, we've had some ups and downs, but overall, the audiences are really responding well. I hope you know that last year was the 90th season of the State Theater, so 90 years, we celebrate it. Our building, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. You probably know that. She's absolutely gorgeous. She's a money pit, but she's absolutely gorgeous. And she is really, I think, in the best shape that she ever has been. So, what we, we have put together a strategic plan in the past year, and at some point, I'd like to come back, not tonight, and maybe share an update on what those initiatives are and give you an update on that. So, I would like to do that in the coming year. But the bottom line is, we are planning for another 90 years or more of this theater being a vibrant part of the Northampton County and the surrounding Lehigh Valley. So, with all that in mind, there is a project that really has, we've been thinking about and planning and vetting vendors for, for quite some time now, but it's really become an urgent need within the past several months to a year. It is related to our ticketing system. Now, a ticketing system, you probably know for a theater or any other venue that sells tickets, is, it's our lifeline. It is the lifeline to what we do. And for us as a nonprofit, it's not just selling tickets, but it is the management system for all of our grants, our members, our donations in general. Everything flows through there. The system that we have had for 13 years now is, at best, I would call, bare bones. It's a very basic system, and two things have happened, well, one thing has happened in the past year, in that there's been, with our vendor, they've made some internal changes and upgrades that have not been improvements at all, and we have had horrible technology problems that frankly are costing us business. Frustration, people go to buy tickets, they get kicked out at the last minute, system crashes, system freezes. It's, it's been a real issue for us. So, that made it the urgent need. We've been wanting to do this project for a number of years because, frankly, we're not keeping up. The, with the way technology enhancements have happened and the way people want to buy tickets online and engage with how they buy their tickets, we're, we're not there. We are falling behind. But then this urgency with the, with the technology crashes have really pushed it to the, the top of the list. The reason that we haven't done it, or a big part of the reason we haven't done it previously, is cost, as you might imagine. I think I have just enough, a packet, if you have, please don't, drop it off. The first, the first page is really the summary. All of the other pages are really just supporting documentation. The short story, if you look in the top-left little grid, our current vendor charges what's the old, considered the old-fashioned way. They charge us a flat annual fee and for tech support and hosting, and the bottom line is, we pay them about $22,000 a year. We have vetted several other systems, and at minimum, to make a change, the, the cost of the system is going to triple, and in some cases, it could have quadrupled, had we gone with what we would consider a Cadillac system. The way that the industry has gone is that they're not doing flat fee charges anymore. It is a per-ticket charge. And I tried to break that down, the next, under what's called a Cessos Showware. That is the vendor after considerable vetting and proposals and demos that we feel best suits our needs, and they are competitively priced in the industry. 60% of our tickets now are sold online, and that is, you know, so you're paying a per-ticket fee, as you can see, of $1.50. So, that, you can see the entire breakdown there. I'm estimating it's going to cost us about $72,000 to bring on this vendor. Here's why we need to do it. Our current system issues, we have thousands of gift cards. It's a big part of our business. Our current system does not allow our patrons to use their gift cards online, so that's a real problem for us, and it's a frustration factor. I hope, you've probably all been to venues where you can do print-at-home ticketing, you print everything at home now. Our current system does not allow us to do that. Again, we're behind. There's no marketing capabilities, really poor mobile device functionality, ongoing tech issues, like I said, so we've got the frustration factor, not to mention they're based out West, and so there's the three hour, two to three hour difference, it's a problem. So, with the new system, it's gonna cost us more, and we, we know that, but if our patrons can use gift cards online, they can print at home, there's that convenience factor, not to mention, we should save about $10,000 a year in postage. That's a, that's a good thing, and we get that time back with our, our box office personnel, so there's hopefully a personnel savings as well. Much better mobile and tablet functionality, and these new systems, most of them including Showware that we're looking at, they have social media integration, so we can actually get some marketing out of this as well. Integrated email marketing. I'm sure you've all bought things at a store, and they say, "Well, if you like this item, you'd probably like this one too. This kind of system will help us do that." "Oh, you're buying tickets to Chorus Line? You'll probably wanna come to Cabaret, too." So, we actually think it can help with ticket sales enhancement. I've seen the reports, they're much better, and we'll have someone on the East Coast 'cause they're based out of New York. So, there's not, with the, the actual per-ticket price, it's not a matter of upfront costs for that, but, you can see my little orange box on the right-hand side, we have some very real hard costs to the tune of about $25,000 upfront to go live with this. We print our tickets on a system called Boca. The vendors pretty much laughed at us when they looked at our printers, which are 21 years old, they're dinosaurs, absolutely incompatible, incompatible with any system out there. So, you can see, I've got about $13,000, I have to do that. And there are some other costs. The ticketing company will give us some scanners, but we have to buy additional ones, so that's what the MC67 scanners are. We have to do a data conversion for our, our gift cards, and we do need, again, to be compatible and full-speed, new Dell computers. So, we are asking, you know, the, the State Theater is working, like I said, to, to be relevant. Our mission-based programs are doing so much in the community, I don't wanna be off too much, but I do wanna point out, the Freddie Awards has now had 47,000 students through it, and this year, we hit the $1 million mark in college scholarships given to local students through the Freddie program. So, the impact is there, and we are working very diligently to grow our membership, you know, be, responsibly care for our building, but the upfront costs on this ticketing system are something that we're gonna ask for the county's consideration on. This will translate directly into bringing people downtown, then they go to the restaurants. It is a full circle of economic vitality, but this system's kind of at the core for us, and if you can see it fit to help us with the cost, the upfront costs, to get this system in place, we would appreciate it. We, our plan, our hope, is to put it in, to sign with the vendor, so that our 30- to 45-day implementation period can be between February and the middle of March, because we are as all hands on deck as it gets once it goes into Freddie season and, and our contract's coming due anyway. So, so we are, we are ready to move on this. We have fully vetted it, and we would appreciate your consideration of funding to help us with the upfront costs.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Just as a formality.
Yes.
When the, when the hotel tax, I guess, applications were submitted, why wasn't this included in that?
We weren't ready at that point. We've been, we, like I said, we've had three demonstrations. I, I wrote that grant a few months ago, and it would've been premature because we had not gotten to the point of selecting the vendor that we feel is the best fit, and I didn't have all the costs together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How are you redeeming gift cards presently, if you're gonna do it online at that?
Well, they try and do it online, they realize they can, and generally, will call the box office in a fairly frustrated manner, but they literally have to give the number on the back of the gift card to a box office person.
And, and you're also, you're also administering and distributing tickets manually as well?
Correct.
Okay, so right there-
Like, someone can buy their tickets online, but then we still print them and mail them.
You still have to print and mail them.
Exactly.
Okay, so as you said, that's $10,000 in postage you're estimating in savings?
Eight to 10,000.
And possibly personnel savings as well?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Okay.
And we'll be voting on a little bit later.
Okay, thank you very much.
Enjoy the show.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Jeff?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Reese, Director of Environmental Planning with Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. I know that on tonight's agenda, you have an introduction of an ordinance regarding the Monocacy Creek, Act 167, Stormwater Management Plan. I'd like to just talk to you very briefly about that this evening, and then in January, we'll be back for the public hearing and consideration of adoption. Hopefully, each of you has received a copy of this. This is a document that is required under state law. The state law dates back to 1978. The Stormwater Management Act of 1978 requires this. It places responsibilities on the county to develop stormwater management plans, to control the impacts of new development in terms of stormwater. So, that is the ultimate purpose. New development to be controlled with appropriate standards for stormwater management. That's a process, again, the act goes back to 1978. This is not the first time that we've created a version of this for the Monocacy Creek. It's actually the third. The first was back in 1989, updated in 2006, and proposed to be updated through this. And the process involves, the counties have, from the inception of this program, delegated the responsibility to create these documents to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, and we have been working on that pretty much ever since. And so, we do have coverage of this type of plan for all the watersheds within the county, but there is a process that requires that to be updated on a fairly regular basis, and so here we are back with the document. I do have a copy of something that I will not go through with you tonight, but we can use it perhaps as a resource for next time. It's simply 12 power lines, like, up, this process, and in particular, it's maybe not too important, but just again, in a very general sense, this is something where, under current Pennsylvania law, municipalities regulate development activities. And so, through this process, we're not changing that. The process involves Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, working with the local communities, conservation districts, other interested partners, to develop a plan for this watershed. The plan includes a model regulation, a model ordinance, which is part of this plan as well. That model regulation, at the end of the process, is to be adopted by each of the municipalities in the watershed. There are 13 municipalities in this watershed, in whole or in part. 10 of those are in Northampton County. So, in those communities, at the end of the process, each of those communities will adopt the regulation that's included within this document, and so all of the communities in this one watershed would be managing stormwater runoff and redevelopment exactly the same way throughout the entire watershed. So, that's the structure of the process. So, we work with the communities all along, they assist us in creating what is in this document, but in the end, it is, it's effective through the municipal adoption of the regulation as part of their subdivision and land development ordinance. So, with that, if there's any questions, I could try to answer them.
I just have one. Are, are there any significant changes from the previous document that you'd like to point out?
I think it's the last page of the handout that you do have. In terms of, again, the Monocacy Creek, the last time there was an ordinance of this type was, uh, 2006, and the key changes associated with this are that we've had to tweak the basic runoff control strategy, without going into a lot of that detail, but release rates. You might've heard that term before. A release rate defines the basic standard that developers have to meet. We've had to tweak that a little bit, because we were finding that we weren't quite as effective in controlling runoff as we were, need to be in this watershed, so it has been slightly tweaked in that fashion. Two other changes associated with it are that, for other watersheds that we've worked on, in Lehigh County only to this point, we have dealt with issues dealing with the balance of water, meaning as rainfall comes down and it hits a plot of ground, what is the fate of that water? Does it go into the ground as recharged? Does it runoff? Does it go back to the atmosphere? And some of our historic stormwater management practices have not done a good job of keeping that in balance when all is said and done, and so there's a standard in the ord, in the regulation to deal with that. A third part of it has to do with a study that we just conducted, dealing with green infrastructure. The idea of using greener soil-based and vegetation-based practices to manage our stormwater, and so there's a standard improvement to enhance our ability to use green infrastructure approaches as we manage storm.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Phillips?
Hey, Jeff. I forgot to ask you this in the past, but, and I'm gonna get the acronym incorrectly, but it's the Municipal Storm Sewer Separation, how does, how does that affect this study?
The Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, or MS4 program-
MS4.
-that most of the communities in Northampton County are responsible for. They have permits with the federal government under that program. One of, there are six measures that are necessary under that permit for each of the municipalities. One of them has to do with post-construction stormwater management. The ordinance that's included in here is structured so that it would help those communities meet that measure. By adoption of this, they meet that federal permit requirement for post-construction stormwater management.
Thank you, thanks, Jeff.
Anything else? Well, thank you, we'll see you on January 4th.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address council this afternoon? There being none, we'll move along. Next, Controller's Report, Mr. Barron, is he here? Nope. County Executive's Report, Mr. Brown?
Hi, good evening, council. I believe all matters of the 2018 budget have now been settled. I think all the documentation was passed forward with that. So, it's just worthy to note that the 2018 budget is balanced, and it's, as is, is balanced on its own revenue. We did not need to use any of the general revenue funds to balance the budget, and I believe, as far as, again, it's an ongoing conversation, but we've gone back to at least 1982, that we could find that, it's the first time in the history of the county that we've had a true zero-based budget with no general revenue dollars. That, the result, when I, we came in office four years ago, I believe the budget we received had about $19.7 million needed from the general fund. So, the work over the last four years of this administration has been to find those efficiencies, and I think the budget in 2018 that you approved and passed is reflective of that overall. So, as we leave office, it's a high note going forward. I would like to acknowledge the work of the, the team that came in and was willing to join the administration, and through the highs and lows of the experience of working within the county, really held, held firm, held to the guns, and I think we've really made some significant improvements with that. I would like to thank the partnership with council. Of course, there's a lot of things we'd like to do, but we need council support, and, and while we don't always agree, and didn't have to agree, I think on, on balance, that the work that we've done over four years has been very positive for the county, for the taxpayer of this county, of the county's movement forward. So, with that, again, I'd like to just thank the members of my team, thank you, council.
Thank you.
And wish, wish you happy holidays and good luck for the incoming council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on, old business. We had nothing listed under old business. Is there any other old business anyone liked to bring up at this time? Okay, there being none, we will move into new business. First item is an introduction of an ordinance providing for the Monocacy Creek Watershed, Act 167, Stormwater Management. Water quality update, at this time, we would need a sponsor and a second to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Kraft is sponsoring, and Mr. Phillips is co-sponsoring. Then, the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the January 4th, 2018 meeting. Next, under new business, is consideration of the General Purpose Authority, St. Luke's Hospital Project Resolution. I'll call on Mrs. Ferraro to introduce that, and then we'll have Mark Hartney from our Economic Development Approach.
It's the same type of resolution that you've done so many times before. Now, therefore, be it resolved by county council, the county of Northampton. I guess you want me to read all of that?
Just the therefore. You can, Reader's Digest version would be fine.
Okay. It is hereby declared to be desirable for health, safety, and welfare of the people in the areas served by the facilities comprising this project. The issuance of the bonds to finance the project and related costs is hereby approved, and it is understood that such approval does not and shall not directly or indirectly obligate the taxing power of the county, or otherwise obligate the county in any way whatsoever, and is given for the sole purpose of complying with applicable provisions of law relating to the financing of the project by the authority, and all prior resolutions or parts of prior resolutions of the county not in accordance with this resolution are hereby repealed insofar as they conflict with their will. Mr. Hartney?
Thank you. This is your standard health, safety, and welfare resolution that have come before you whenever the General Purpose Authority does nonprofit bond issuances with hospitals, universities. I have Carl Alberto here, from St. Luke's Hospital. He is the Network Vice President of Finance to describe the project and answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you.
Good early evening to everybody. I'll give you a brief project description. I'll go through the two pages of it, but in essence, essentially what we're doing is, we're actually gonna construct a new replacement hospital in Quapertown, so that's an in-bed replacement hospital to our existing facility that we have down there. And then, those of you that are familiar with our Anderson campus, we're actually gonna construct a new hospital tower, similar to the hospital tower that's there now. We're gonna add 36 beds to the Anderson campus, and the proceeds from this financing will also incorporate the various equipment that we'd need for both of those facilities, and any of the cost of issuance that would be incurred relative to the issuance of the, of the bonds as well.
All right, any questions? Again, we've done this numerous times with, with St. Luke's, and we appreciate working with you. I think you've done a good job there.
Right, we appreciate the, the support that we've had from the council.
And we hope that the new tax code doesn't take this away from us.
Well, we, we heard that potentially, there's been some last-minute modifications to that code, so hopefully, we'll be in good shape going forward as well.
That's what comes to the county, benefits many, so.
Right.
Any other questions or discussion? Nope, okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Next item under new business is consideration of the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement Resolution. Mr. Vaughn is not here, I'll, I'll introduce that. Whereas, the Northampton County Council has reviewed the terms and conditions for participation in the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement between the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Long-Term Living, and Northampton County, effective December 14th, 2017. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Northampton County Council hereby consents to participate in the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement, effective December 14th, 2017, and validates the Northampton County, County hereby consents to funding the annual IGT transfer of $13,014,409. Is there anyone here from Human Services to address this? Yes, yeah. Duran, would you like to?
Mr. Hunter.
Or Mr. Hunter?
Flip a coin.
Hi, John, I'm Jim Hunter.
Well, I saw Duran stand up, so.
Well, he coached me back there, I'd say.
He coached you up.
All right, good evening. You know, this is, you know, what we, what we've done for the last two or three years. This is the payment that, you know, we will send in. The money's, we have to, the reasons on the agenda tonight is that we have to have this resolution by the 31st of December, which we'll take care of tomorrow, and then, we don't owe the money until June, and then, about two to three weeks after, it has to be before June 30th, before they close out their year, so then we'll have our money back. So, this is just the payment that we make.
Okay, and this was part of the budget that we approved last week?
Yes.
Any questions, discussion on this? Okay, well, I'd just say, I'm glad that the, the state brought this back, and I hope they continue with the program, because without it, I think we'd be running a deficit at Gracemonte like we had been previously. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, next item, consideration of donation to Gracemonte, Lehigh Valley, Chapter 190, Military Order of the Purple Heart Resolution. Again, Mr. Vaughn is not here. Is there anyone that would like to introduce the resolution? Mr. Kraft?
Veteran, my own, right. All right, thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept a donation of $630 on behalf of the Gracemonte residents who are veterans.
All right, we've done this in the past. Any question or discussion?
Appreciate it.
Yep, we thank them for the donation. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, and can we send them a letter thanking them for what they do and the donation? Thank you. All right, then the next item under new business is consideration of an agreement between the County of Northampton and Havilland Hughes Law Firm Resolution. Let's see, I'll introduce that. Whereas, on December 7th, 2017, county council received a request to approve an agreement between the County of Northampton and Havilland Hughes to undertake the representation on a contingency basis of Northampton County with respect to potential claims arising from the purchase, use, and abuse of opioids manufactured and sold by various companies. See attachment number one. See attachment number one. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council. Agreement between the county of Northampton and Havilland Hughes shall be approved this 14th day of December, 2017. And is there anyone here that would like to address this?
I can't recall who at the last council meeting asked about whether we've been doing an investigation of opioid claims. I think it might have been you, John. We haven't for some time. And a lot of different people came in, and they had different concepts of how the case would work. And I'm going to use some legalese that Phil's going to understand. Most of these cases are going to wind up in what's called the NMDL, multi-district litigation. It's complicated. Case takes forever. You get quarters on the dollar where you'd normally get a full recovery if you do it in your own courthouse. One law firm distinguished itself. They came in, and their pitch was that they would keep the case here. They have experience in this courthouse. The lead attorney for the firm, Don Havilland, I worked in Philadelphia for a long time, and contrary to some people who think that I'm just a debt collection lawyer, I'm actually, I've brought a lot of mass toward claims, and I paid a lot of bills with personal injury recoveries and cases such, just like this. Don Havilland is quite, without any overemphasis here, one of the best lawyers in the entire state of Pennsylvania. And I'm also happy to say that Don has someone working with him in his firm who knows this area quite well and has practiced in Lehigh and Northampton County, and that's Bill Platt. So they came in with a pitch that was unique, which was, we're going to keep the case here. We're going to maximize the dollars for Northampton County. And to give you an idea of how they would maximize the dollars, in previous cases where Don has represented the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in drug price fixing cases, two of them being in Northampton County, my understanding is his recoveries have been in the area of $27 million on one and then $52 million on another. So there's a proven track record here. And I wouldn't belabor the point too much in front of you to speak about Don effusively. I would prefer, if you'd like, to let the man speak for himself because I think he's the most impressive advocate for their position. And he can explain in greater detail why these guys, unlike a lot of other firms that are taking these cases and are going to wind up just putting them in through a machine where you're going to get, you know, minimal recoveries, is going to keep the case here, maximize your recovery. And I quite honestly think that this is a real lucky break for us to get as a county because these guys are fantastic. But with that, I'd like to let Don speak.
Certainly.
Mrs. Boy.
May I please the counsel, Don Havilland from Havilland Hughes. I just left my mother in Naples, Florida. I'll tell you, I should have gotten a recording. She'd be very proud of those comments. I'm not sure I resemble them completely, but I'll try to live up to them. I don't want to take up too much time tonight. I want to make sure I answer all the questions the council has, but I do want to make three quick points. Who we are, what we've done, and what we intend to do. Who we are is a small boutique firm. We've got about a half, half a dozen to 10 lawyers over the years. We flex to get as big as we need to be to meet the challenges, and I'll get to that in a moment because we had a very substantial piece of litigation in this county in 2010. We pride ourselves on being a boutique firm. We don't take on a lot of business. We take on very finite, commercial, complex litigation like this. It's not personal injury. It's not your garden variety type of litigation. You really have to understand the nuances of the drug litigation and then the laws that you're trying to prosecute those companies under because the defense counsel do know that, those laws. And you tend to see these large national firms coming into county courts and fighting. So that history of doing that for over 20 years is what we bring to bear in every litigation. What we've done is we've taken our brand of litigation, and we've been able to represent individual clients. And one of our biggest clients currently, we've represented for over five years, is a coalition called the Delar Valley Healthcare Coalition. It's the largest coalition of a kind of self-funded payers, counties, towns, cities, self-funded payers, unions, in 13 different states. And what we've done is litigate individually on behalf of them and brokered settlements. You don't get a lot of press for things like that. The coalition's very happy, and so is the membership. And many of the cities and towns and counties around here count as members and have seen those checks coming over the years. That's the type of work we do, and that's the type of work that we brought to the county to discuss with the executive and Mr. Durkin about what we'd like to do. I do want to touch upon what Mr. Durkin talked about, what we did in 2010. There was a very large piece of litigation against the drug industry involving pricing, something called the average wholesale price, about 26-state suit. We were hired by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Attorney General's Office, and we actually went through three, four different administrations. But we brought that case here to Northampton County. It was filed in Commonwealth Court, which if you understand our court system, we've got a very special court here, and we have a judge by the name of Simpson, who's from this county, and he was the trial judge. And we realized very quickly that the Commonwealth Court doesn't have a trial court, so he had to come back and beg a favor from a friend here, and we tried the cases here. The part that Mr. Durkin did talk about, we ended up settling for over $200 million for the state. We had to try against two companies because you always get a couple that want to hold out and try it. The first case was Bristol-Mahatch Squibb. We got $27 million. Johnson &amp; Johnson, who happens to be one of the defendants in the opioid litigation, figured they had a better shot at it. We're not as bad as everybody else. Judge Simpson awarded $52 million. And then we settled with five, and the case was over. So we proved that we can try these cases, we will try these cases if we have to, to be able to get the value for the client that we're seeking. And what we proposed to do for the county is file for the county in the county, under Pennsylvania laws, against Pennsylvania companies. What's strange about what happens in these cases, and you've got over 100 counties across the country that have sued, you've probably seen it in the paper, and all you have to do is pick up a paper every week and you see opioids. The president called it an epidemic. Well, it is. It's a health crisis. But it's an economic problem, too, for cities, counties, towns. How do you solve that problem that's hurting your budget? Your coroner's office is seeing, police, fire, the prison systems. That's an economic loss. It's an economic impact, and the only way to recover for that is to get an economic damage. Pennsylvania has the best robust law, I believe, in the country, the consumer fraud law. And we've tried cases underneath that law. We've established that drug companies who engage in marketing fraud like this can be held accountable for unfair and deceptive acts and practices, and that's what's happening here. We've been able to pinpoint specific acts that have happened in this situation that we can target back to the drug companies. It changed the dialogue that doctors have with patients. Now we treat pain. We treat pain all the time, and we give people addictive medication, which causes the epidemic that we have. So we're out on a limb in terms of that approach, but by keeping it local, by keeping it focused in the court system where the judges understand the law, understand the plaintiff, we have the ability to control the outcome. And more importantly, when you want to have that outcome. If the county wants to settle with a drug company, we can do it. If the case ends up in a federal court system, and I can tell you now that the multi-district case is now in Cleveland, Ohio, so we'd be in a different state with a different judge, different laws, deciding whether or not our law should apply. And my experience has been that's a five-to-10-year odyssey. It's going to go on and on and on. I thought Mr. Durkin would compare this tobacco because tobacco just went on for a generation, and it still is. And I frankly don't, in our firm, we don't approach cases as a lifetime endeavor. We see it as a three-year horizon at most. By having the county sue in the county with a county judge, we can control that outcome, and that's our recommendation. Happy to answer any questions you have tonight.
Mrs. Ferraro and then Mr. Kraft.
Okay. This is a whole lot to digest.
Sure.
Tell me again, what is the basis of your lawsuit? You said for deceptive advertising practices?
Marketing.
Marketing.
So our consumer fraud law allows us to sue for unfair and deceptive acts or practices.
So all these commercials we see on TV with pharmaceuticals, is some of that involved?
It's more acute.
It's more acute.
What happened is drug detailers went out and started to talk to doctors and changed the decisions about when to treat with pain medication. Treating for, instead of situations with cancer patients who absolutely need pen medication, managing pain. I spoke to one doctor who said that in the last 10 years, she's seen the change from older people coming in saying, I'm in pain, and she used to say, well, everybody's in pain. Get out of my office. I'm not going to give you an opioid for it. But now they're writing scripts for it. I do believe that's starting to change with all the focus it's been.
Absolutely.
It's not happening as much. We're dealing a lot with the rearview mirror of the situation.
Does this have anything to do with that law that went through Congress? I know that Congressman Marino got some hit with on 60 Minutes.
I know Congress is trying to do something about it. My experience has always been when the federal government gets involved, it never really trickles down to the county level and to the payer level.
So.
We typically come in and try to recover.
Basically, who are your clients?
So we represent cities, towns, municipalities, some unions, all self-funded payers, folks that pay out of pocket.
For our health insurance.
For over health benefits. Right.
Mr. Kraft, you have a question?
Yeah, I understand your credentials, and I appreciate you coming here. Have you talked to the administration that's coming in? Have you had conversations with Lamont McClellan yet?
We have not. And I'll tell you that what Mr. Durkin suggested, we were brought in many months ago to start the investigation, start looking into the county's claims, the economics side of it. We've just finalized that, which brought it to the fruition of this council session.
Okay. Was there any, would there be any adverse effect on you or the contract if we put this off till next year when you could talk to the new county executive and explain what you're doing and see if that administration wants to be bound to this contract? I mean, I understand what you're giving is very good. I like what you're saying. But I don't think it's something, I mean, I guess I sent you a case law on it of binding the next administration to a contract like this, and I don't want to have it not be approved because, you know, you know what you're doing, obviously you know what you're doing, but I want to have the future executive to have a say in his solicitors whether or not they think they want to go down this route. And I don't see why they wouldn't. But would that adversely affect?
Sure. I'd have to come back at any time to talk to the executive. I do want to point out a couple of things.
Well, we take, they take over next, in two weeks. So like next month isn't going to kill this contract going. I mean, it doesn't have to be signed tonight and dotted line and everything, right? There's no problem with putting it forward?
The issue we have is just the momentum of the work that was done with this administration and that work.
Yeah, but this is holiday week, and the momentum of the work isn't going to go anywhere as we all know how law works and how long it takes for everything to go.
The good news is the county's a lot faster than the federal.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't affect this. I mean, if you started the second week in January because Lamont meets you and wants it, that would be fine with you, right?
So we're ambivalent to the, if the county decides to do it, that's our recommendation. We think now's the time to make the decision to do it, and then how the process rolls out about the logistics of it, certainly is up to the council.
Yeah, but, you know, there's case law that one county council can't bind another one to a contract like this, and I don't want it to get screwed up because somebody, you know, hasn't had the opportunity to look at it.
So I'm only familiar with that at the state level because we had a contract that went back to, I think it was, 2006, that bound four administrations of attorneys general, and we actually switched from Republican to Democrat.
Right.
We were inactive litigation, and it actually took that long to get that case resolved.
Yeah. I'm not saying you, you sound very knowledgeable, and I'm not, I'm not going there at all. I just think that this should be table till next year for Lamont to talk to, and that's all. You know, and not, nothing against you or your presentation or what you can do or what you can bring to the county, I just think it's not appropriate, proper, I can't speak my nose at this time.
I just have one question before we take any action. The Attorney General was mentioned. I guess my question is, is this the type of litigation that's better handled through the state attorney general's offices or through, and I know a number of counties have already filed. So my question is, are we better off working through the attorney general's office or with you separately? Do you know how?
So I asked that question to Josh Shapiro over lunch. I wanted to know the answer firsthand, and I was told that the state is working with a coalition of states on this problem at the macro level. And all the states realize that many, many counties, over 100 to date, have already sued because it is a localized problem. There's no one-size-fits-all. The case I described was very simple and economic case with one pricing standard that cut across it. But the issues in this county, and frankly, the opioid epidemic in the streets of this county, are very different than what are happening in Harrisburg and frankly, when you cross state lines. So I don't think you're going to see that state-level lawsuit that's going to solve the problem for every single county. It's a, I've heard folks talk about class action. It's not a class action. It won't be a class action. If I'm wrong, I'll retire. Because it's one of those things that it's going to be so individualized about the nature of the harm, the nature of the claim, it's only going to be resolved at a local level. There may be some macro resolution down the road. Our proposal is to make sure that you're a part of that discussion by suing here now, now in the sense of today is the day to make the decision to go forward. Because the case has been going on in our, in our world for about a year in terms of assessing it, and we are starting to see some changes. We do run into a situation, not to get too technical, with the statute of limitations, and how long do you wait when you know that there's a wrong? We have up to four years under the statute, but I don't like to get into the situation where when we know something, because we fought many cases where the defense lawyers literally say, well, you knew, you did nothing about it. And I use the example down in the courthouse here. Well, if somebody drove across that bridge into Easton doing 99 miles an hour 100 times, but the 101st time the police pulled him over, it's still wrong. And the jury got that message. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'm certainly happy to come back at any time.
Mr. Geisinger, you had a?
Well, let me see what Mr. Durkin has to say.
There's one other issue that could come up in these cases, which is you have the risk of an adverse precedent in another jurisdiction, which could have an impact on the case going here. When I looked at these cases, one of the things that, when I was talking to John about them, was as far as getting them out the door quickly, was to put one in the system and just start creating the precedent. I'm speaking Phil's language right now. If you create that within the state, you don't run into issues which are, there are two issues that could pop up. One is called collateral estoppel. One is called res judicata. If another jurisdiction has a ruling where it becomes the guiding law and another unfavorable jurisdiction, Don is absolutely correct in regard to the fact that we have one of the best consumer protection laws out there, or the fraud laws out there. If you have another jurisdiction create bad precedent, it has a way of bleeding into these cases. And I ran into this when I was, I was involved in buyout lawsuits, totally different. Those were class actions. But you would be filing in the MDL, and you would have precedent that you have to go against, and it was tough to get the case back to the state level where you could get a recovery. And in that case, as I recall, the difference between the MDL recovery that we would have gotten and what we ultimately got in state court, and this was a one plaintiff situation, it was several multiples. It would have been like $200,000 I would have gotten a guy. Instead, we wound up getting about $800,000.
That's one of those. To put a point on that, it's interesting that Ohio came up twice. One of the things we kept hearing in this courthouse with the state case was about Ohio. I'll give you an example. One of the companies that's represented by a New York firm said, we'll give the state $3.5 million. And our client attorney general said, we need $4 million. It was the smallest of the settlements we did. And we kept hearing about Ohio because of what had happened in Ohio, the presence of Ohio. And it took Judge Simpson the better part of about three months to get that additional $500,000. But Ryan makes a good point about trying to get out in front of it for the county's claim under the state law so that we're not burdened by what's happening elsewhere. And so there are always time pressures, but this litigation has been out there for quite a while. It's starting to see some precedents form. So I would just suggest that the county act prudently and as efficiently as it deems appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, sir. So, you're building up expertise in this area, and I think, Mr. Kraft asked a question in regards to what would be the difference if we waited for a month, let's say, and you said, well, there's, you have the momentum on the work that you've already done. But we're, this resolution is to approve a contingency of something that may happen. So, I'm trying to underst, so the work that you've done so far is your expertise in this general subject, but not on the behalf of Northampton County? Is that, are you, you've not done anything for us yet, have you?
We have done about three, four months of work for the county already without an engagement as part of our investigation, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the momentum I was talking about with this administration. As a law firm, we're apolitical, we look at it simply as preparing for a lawsuit. And so, we're working with this administration up to this important time, and as I said, having to get to the end of the year and the holidays for this to come to the resolution that it's before.
So, I'm a layman. So, you've done that work for the county?
Yes.
Not for pay, but on speculation that you'll get future work?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanted to comment that Ken sent me some appellate court opinions which relate to the issue that he was talking about, and I guess what I would want you to know in that regard is that the cases that Ken sent weren't entirely similar to the current case, but there was language in the cases dealing with whether and under what circumstances a, an outgoing, if you will, counsel should be entering into a contract that would bind the new counsel and the new administration. So, I mean, with that said, I would also say that my experience in civil litigation is such that timing is often not only important, sometimes dispositive. So, if you decide not to pursue it, I would hope that it would be pursued soon. And frankly, no one asked me this, but I looked over the contingency fee agreement, and frankly, it's a very fair agreement, so, just for what it's worth.
What's the duration of the contract?
It's-
I forget.
There is no duration. There is no duration.
The contract is a standard, and-
Like 30 days?
Quite elegant, just simple contingency fee agreement. When and if there is a recovery, they get paid and you get paid, that's it. So, typically, Don's absolutely accurate in stating that it's got about a three-year horizon. Three years is about as far out as it gets with state court litigation. And the theory here is very similar to tobacco, so it's not going to be something that's going to be ridiculously complex, that they'll tie it up in a million different motions. Defense attorneys will bring some motions and hold things up a bit, but it should probably go through this courthouse within about three years.
Peggy, the agreement in question retains that firm to represent the county for the duration of the litigation, but it also provides that if for some reason the county chose to discontinue their representation at any time, the county can do that. The only thing that you would owe at that point is you would owe the firm their, any costs that they've incurred, and in addition, out of any recovery, they would be entitled to be compensated on what's referred to here as a pro rata basis, and I'm interpreting that to mean that there would be some discussion between them and the new firm to determine how any fees would be split.
That's exactly how it would work.
I have a question on that. They've said they've done work already, so we enter into this contract, if you guys decide to do this, which I think you should table it right now, but if they enter into this, do we owe them money if Lamont says, "I don't want this contract next year, first week"? I mean, I'd rather see him get the chance to talk to them.
The answer is no.
They said they've been working on it.
They've done investigation work, they've looked into it, they've brought us a list of the different drugs. It's actually, I mean, you get really into the weeds here, but there's a million drugs that you have to look at.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta understand what I'm saying here, okay? I mean, you understand, he said it's okay, it's two weeks. I mean, let Lamont talk to the guy and have an interview with him and decide whether they want to do it or not, that's all I'm saying.
I totally understand.
You know, and that's it.
What the agreement would provide in, under those circumstances is if you retain them and then discontinued their representation, you would owe them their out-of-pocket expenses, whatever they might be.
Yeah, and I know it's a holiday week, you know, coming up, but you can have a lot of out-of-pocket expenses by filing whatever you want. I'm just saying that, just think we need to just slow down. We're doing this on, whatever today is, December 15th or what, I don't even know what day it is today, but 14, 14, thank you.
I'd actually, I'd actually like to see, I'd like to see something, though, if you could get it filed, I think that, from what I'm seeing in the marketplace with these things moving, we're already behind in terms of getting something filed and getting something moving in the court system, because these companies, a lot of these companies are going to go bankrupt. The smaller players are probably going to go chapter, and that's going to push everything toward the mon, the huge players. There's an enormous pot of money there with the big players. But these things are, as you know, and I apologize for talking to this innocently, but first-in tends to get the best chunk of the change that's available. And my initial investigation of this, I had, I had no idea the amount that potentially is available, given the cost that the county has incurred, so my only recommendation would be that we probably should have done this earlier than now, we probably should have done it about a month or so ago, and it's just because trial schedules, and Mr. Haberman is a very busy attorney, I'm tremendously busy, you know, putting this all together, making sure that we had a finished product where we were certain that you guys had a really good claim, and you do. It takes a bit of time, but we're quite honestly behind on this right now.
All right, anything else, Mr. Bennell?
I understand what Mr. Kraft is saying, the only issue is, we're elected until the next administration comes through. I've been wanting to say, and government takes too long to do anything. I'm in favor of it, I don't see where it hurts, we've all talked about the opioid addiction for many months now. And I guess the long and the short of it is, I just, the next administration has a big task, and that's not saying that Mr. McClellan can't handle it, but I think in the grand scheme of things with a new administration, who knows how long until this comes back under the front burner? So, we were elected to hold our office until the next administration comes in, and this is now before us, so I'm in favor of it.
And what's wrong really with offering a little continuity between administrations? I mean, it's not, everything doesn't have to be boom, boom, cut and dry.
Peggy, I'm just saying that Lamont should have a chance to look at it before we pull him into a binding agreement. You know, there's going to be four new county councils be prepared next year, new county executive, new everybody, let them look at it, it's two weeks. He's going to look at it right away. I'm not going to, I'm not going to let him not look at it. I mean, it's something that's important, it's very important. I like the attorney, I like the firm, I just don't think we are being proper by doing this at this time. The last session of county council from Northampton County for this year, and it's done. I, you know, that's all I'm saying. And I make a motion to table it on those grounds. You guys can do what you want.
We have a motion to table, is there a second? Dies for lack of a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vennel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to one.
Passes by a vote of five to one? Thank you very much, we look forward to working with you, and I hope, I hope, you can make some progress for us, because I understand Mr. Kraft's argument, but I feel very strongly about this issue. I think it's gone on long enough, and I wanted to do something, and I hope that by working with your firm, that we can take some steps forward. Thank you. All right, then the next item is consideration of contingency transfer resolutions. First item, Because of a Dog, City of Bethlehem Kennel Project, and I'll introduce the resolution. Whereas in July 2014, the nonprofit Because of a Dog was founded and has assisted companion pet owners with financial assistance for medical, surgical, food, and supplies. Because of a Dog also assists local and state government agencies, municipalities, and animal control officers with food and supplies for strays. And whereas the City of Bethlehem and Because of a Dog have launched a fundraising campaign seeking donations to help design and build a new kennel in the City of Bethlehem for stray dogs, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $5,000 shall be transferred from the 2017 contingency account and allocated to Because of a Dog this 14th day of December 2017. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, several years ago during John Stofa's administration, he did a extensive study on the issue of stray dogs and pets, and as a result of that, we've seen several municipalities take some steps to address this issue. This organization has teamed up with the City of Bethlehem for one of those, and next year, I hope we can invite Mr. Parsons back for the slate belt, who is doing one of their own up there. They recently purchased the building, so I'm hoping that we can allocate for them as well. And I guess, to answer the question that came up earlier, by the time that they reached out and we heard, it was too late to go through the SIP process, but I did have it vetted through the Department of Community and Economic Development, and they offered their support and believe it's a worthy project. So, that's why I put it forward, and I hope I'll have your support. Any questions, Mr. Bennell?
Just an overall, Mr. President, and I'm not being, and I want to rehash this, but the reason why I've asked that the council contingency fund be dropped down, and I'm going to echo Mr. Phillips over the years, is that the contingency fund at the end of the year, and it's not just this council, I'm sure it'll continue on, becomes a last-ditch piggyback for special projects. And I like the fact that Mr. Hurlinger has taken, you know, I always put in for the Miracle Leaf for 5,000, Mr. McClellan always put in Stevens Place for 5,000, and I see it's on here again. I'm just against these type of things going in there because it is that end-of-the-year piggyback for special projects. Now, and that's why I asked the State Theater why it came in so late, and you've addressed that. So, I just, again, before I leave, just further councils these contingency funds, if these projects are that important, there should be a spot in the budget for them.
Right.
But I am supporting, because it is a worthy cause, but it's just-
Understood, and I appreciate that, and I, just telling Peggy before the meeting, once upon a time, this contingency fund was almost, was half a million dollars. So, I think we have made some strides into limiting these awards.
You know, and this wasn't my idea, John brought it, this is a great, this is a great cause. I mean, I guess I wasn't paying attention at home, but it is a great cause, and I'm going to support it.
I remember when the COGS were all talking about, you know, the COGS were working together to try and solve this, it was huge, but, and little by little, it's being done.
Right, yes, it's a good cause.
I have a question. I don't like, I don't, contingency is for unknown emergencies. This is, I like your term, the end-of-the-year piggyback thing. So, I'm, I'm not going to vote for Because of a Dog, and I'm not going to vote for the State Theater. Now, Stevens Place, we do that every year, and I actually thought that we put that into the budget, I must have-
It is.
Yeah, we did.
How come, what, how come it was more now?
It's not in the 2017 budget, it's in the 2018.
Are we voting on all three of these at once?
No, we're not, so why don't we wait till we-
Not only in the 2017 budget for Stevens Place.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that one. We'll get to that, we'll get to that one.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we, can we call for the vote on this one?
On the animal control?
Yeah.
Kuzick?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Vennel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to one.
Passes by a vote of five to one. Next, the State Theater, I'll call on Mrs. Ferraro to introduce that resolution.
And Denise Smith gave quite an update and answered questions earlier, and I just strongly feel that we've been a great partner with them for years, and because this is a big old historic building and all of its own homes, and we know what it takes to keep that going. And the venue itself, the State Theater, has come in competition with so many others, tickets that are subsidized, for example, the Sands and the PPL Center with their NIS and so forth. So, I just think this is a great way that we can help them with, update their technology and save them a lot of money with postage, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, now therefore be it resolved that the sum of 20,000 shall be transferred from the 2017 contingency account and allocated to the State Theater this 14th day of September.
Nice second motion.
Yeah, it is an old theater, but they have to sell tickets the modern way. So, I'll be supporting it as well. Any further discussion?
Mr. Kuzick, my, same thing. This is not, this is not an emergency.
Well, it is for them.
It's not, it's not, it's not an emergency that needs to be filled by contingency. We have a very robust review process of the SIP, where I spent like a couple of days to review it, and this, this could have been on there, it wasn't on there. I think that, you know, the word got out, "Hey, the aquarium's getting $10 million. These guys are giving away money, let's go up to the courthouse and get some money."
Now, they weren't ready, she answered your questions.
All right, any further discussion? Can we call the vote, please?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Vennel?
No.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Passes by a vote of four to two.
So, four to two? Do we need five?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, no, you have a quorum, of course, the majority are quorum.
Mr. Lauer, you have the-
No, I think if you have a quorum, it's-
It's your majority.
It's a majority vote, probably.
Yeah, as long as you have five people.
I thought it was five.
Different for ordinance, but-
Yeah, for an ordinance, but this is a resolution.
This is a resolution, I think we're okay with it.
All right, well, we'll have Linda, why don't you-
Would you like me to-
Yeah, yeah, we'll take a, take a minute. I thought it was five. I thought you only needed five. Yeah, I thought it was that, that was on procedural motions. It's a majority on procedural motions, but it's, I think it's five for a resolution.
Yeah, but I thought it was mixed.
Yeah, but I think it's a, it's a, yeah, on motions, though, it's a majority, but on resolutions or ordinances, it's five.
I think it's always pretty trial-assumed, you know.
I agree.
Hmm?
That's going to be in the morning call tomorrow, you know that?
Well, we need a motion to reconsider by someone who voted no.
I will make another motion.
No, reconsideration motion has to be from somebody that voted no.
You're right, who dissented.
Mr. Vennel, it's in your court.
That was the plan. The guy on the end keeps dragging it out.
You know, I think Mr. Kraft should try to convince me to change my vote.
I was going to say, it's the guy in the purple shirt.
He's got a lovely speaking voice.
You know what they say, if someone offers you a mint, you better take it.
I think Mr. Kuzick is correct, we do need a majority of the members for this.
Okay.
So, do we make a motion to reconsider?
A motion to reconsider must come from someone who voted in dissent, so-
In dissent?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to reconsider.
Okay, so Mr. Bennell has made a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Ferraro, okay. So, the motion is back on the table through reconsideration. Ms. Zembo, can we call the roll?
No.
Yes, the motion-
Yeah, to reconsider.
To reconsider. First, it's to reconsider, and then it's on the, yeah.
Mr. Vennel?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, so the motion to reconsider passes by a vote of six to zero. Now, on the resolution, okay, let's call the vote for the State Theater. Oh, any further debate on it? I think we covered it. Okay, on the resolution.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn, I mean, Mr. Vennel?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to one.
Passes by a vote of five to one.
Keep the doors open.
Dust off Robert's rules there a little bit.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Next item is Stevens Place, and I'll call on Mr. Kraft to introduce the Stevens Place resolution.
I can lend you mine.
Do you want mine?
I guess hopefully you'll do the right one.
You have long arms.
Resolved by Northampton County Council that one in accordance with Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 206.
No.
Nope?
No.
Give me the right one, thank you. Thank you. Now, therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the sum of $5,000 shall be transferred from the 2017 contingency account and allocated to Stevens Place this 14th day of December 2017. And we so vote. Now we so vote.
All right. Any discussion on Stevens Place, Mr. Phillips?
So we put it in the contingency last year for 2017.
Yeah.
And, and I'm so happy, we put it in the budget for 2018. So this is, this is an additional $5,000 for 2017, is that what this is?
I, I believe that the, what I've been told is that there was no allocation in 2017 to this organization.
Right.
The allocation that's in the budget is for 2018. So in next December 14th or 15th, this will hopefully not be necessary.
I got, and so in 2016, we went out of the contingency fund, that was for 2016. We didn't put it in the budget, we didn't do it, I got it, and, but it's in the budget for next year.
Correct.
All good stuff.
All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to zero.
Passes unanimously. All right then, next item, consideration of the 2018 County Council Meeting Schedule Resolution. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that won in accordance with Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 206A, the Northampton County Council Organizational Meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018, and will begin at 4:30 PM prevailing time in the third floor meeting room, room number 3116 Northampton County Courthouse, 669 Washington Street, Eastern Pennsylvania. And two, the regular schedule of meetings for the year 2018 shall be conducted on the first and third Thursday of each respective month, beginning at 6:30 PM prevailing time in the third floor meeting room, number 3116 Northampton County Courthouse, 669 Washington, Eastern Pennsylvania, with the following exception. A, for the month of December, the meeting scheduled for December 20th, 2018 is canceled and rescheduled for December 13th, 2018, and will begin at 4:30 PM prevailing time, and will be held in the third floor meeting room, number 3116 Northampton County Courthouse, 669 Washington Street, Eastern Pennsylvania. That is the schedule for next year. Any discussion?
How often does it fall where we don't hit a holiday? It's like the first one I've seen, we had to move us, meeting somewhere. It's amazing.
Where usually the July 4th tends to be an issue, but apparently it's not for next year, so...
Perfect.
We won't need to schedule around it. Any other discussion on the meeting schedule for next year? Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to zero.
Passes by a vote of six to zero. That was all we had under new business. Is there any other new business that any member would like to bring up at this time? Okay. Any council committee reports? No committee reports. Any liaison reports? No liaison reports. Council clerk report? No report. Solicitors report, Mr. Lauer?
No report.
Okay, well, since there's no report, I would just like to take this time to thank you for your service to this council over the years. It's been great working with you and wish you all the luck in the future, so...
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. It's been, it's, it was a new experience for me as somebody who did nothing but tried cases, and I, I thoroughly enjoyed it, a lot of it I didn't really understand for a while, and I, I think I've now understand it, so maybe that's what happens. When you get to know what you're doing, it's time to move on.
Okay, then before we take the last action, I'd like to take a moment at this time to issue the following proclamations. And then the first one is North, Northampton County Council, presented to Seth Vaughan, he's not here, if we could send this to him. In honor and recognition of the dedicated public service as a member of the Northampton County Council, congratulations and a heartfelt thank you are extended to Seth Vaughan. Your guidance and wisdom have helped the Northampton County Council deliberate carefully, thoughtfully and wisely, with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County in mind. Best wishes are extended for success in all your future endeavors, presented by the members of Northampton County Council on this 14th day of December 2017. And we can have that sent to him. Then the next one, from the County of Northampton, Northampton County Council, presented to Mr. Hayden Phillips. In honor and recognition of dedicated public service as a member of the Northampton County Council, congratulations and a heartfelt thank you are extended to Hayden Phillips. Your guidance and wisdom have helped the County of Northampton deliberate carefully, thoughtfully, wisely, and with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County in mind. Best wishes are extended for success in all future endeavors, presented by the members of the Northampton County Council on this 14th day of December 2017.
Good job, Eva. Thank you.
And you'd like to say a few parting words? We, we would indulge you at this time.
I really don't have a lot to say. I, I've enjoyed it immensely. I made a lot of nice friends. It was a great experience and, and I'm always gonna treasure these four years in my memory. Thank you for everybody.
Thank you. All right. The next one, County of Northampton, Northampton County Council, presented to Glenn A. Geisinger in honor and recognition of dedicated public service as a member of the Northampton County Council. Congratulations and a heartfelt thank you are extended to Glenn A. Geisinger. Your guidance and wisdom have helped the County of Northham deliberate carefully, thoughtfully and wisely, and with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County in mind. Best wishes are extended for success in all future endeavors, presented by the members of Northampton County Council on this 14th day of December 2017. Go, congratulations.
I'm gonna be slightly more long-winded than Hayden, but I'll, I'll keep it short, I promise. You know, I ran for this office four years ago with, with the opportunity to serve the community, something that I had always done in my life and wanted to continue to do. I look back and I realize I definitely made mistakes along the way and learned from those mistakes. But as I look out and I see, I saw Mr. Heckman was here, I think he's still here somewhere, and Mr. McGee is here, and I am grateful for their being here, I'm grateful for their commitment, and I, I am grateful for all of the opportunities I've had to gain knowledge from the people around me. The, Mr. Bennell and I ran a lot together four years ago, and we knocked a lot of doors, and we had a lot of experiences of different moments that were funny, and, and some of them were trying. And I wanna thank the people of Northampton County, and I wanna thank most of all the people sitting in this room, because you are the ones, and there's a few of you, whether you've agreed with me or not, you've been here. You've been committed to the good welfare of the people of Northampton County, and that is what I believe everyone up here has always tried to do. Vote their conscience to do that, what is right by what they believe the people, that is in the best interest of the people they represent. And that is what you ask of your representatives, and it has been an honor and a pleasure, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to quickly backtrack, and this, since I kinda jumped the gun. The County of Northampton, Northampton County Council, presented to Philip D. Lauer, in honor and recognition of dedicated public service as solicitor to Northampton County Council, congratulations and a heartfelt thank you are extended to Philip D. Lauer. Your guidance and wisdom have helped the County of Northampton and Northampton County Council deliberate carefully, thoughtfully, wisely, and with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County in mind. Best wishes are extended for success in all future endeavors, presented by the members of Northampton County Council on this 14th day of December 2017. And now the last one. County of Northampton, Northampton County Council, presented to Matthew M. Bennell, in honor and recognition of dedicated public service as a member of the Northampton County Council. Congratulations and a heartfelt thank you are extended to Matthew M. Bennell. Your guidance and wisdom have helped the Northampton County Council deliberate carefully, thoughtfully, wisely, and with the best interests of the citizens of Northampton County in mind. Best wishes are extended for success in all future endeavors, presented by the members of Northampton County Council on this 14th day of December 2017. And again, if you'd like to say a few words, we...
Actually, I was, I was speaking with Mr. Durkin the other day, and he actually had some nice things to say about council administration. I'm gonna yield a minute or two to Mr. Durkin if he doesn't mind, because better from somebody else's mouth than mine, I guess.
I've spoken enough. I thought I was gonna be real quick, 'cause I know it's a long meeting.
Wow.
First of all, thank you very much. It's been a great privilege and an honor to have represented the administration before you all. Even though we didn't agree on things, I have never worked with a nicer group of people. Your solicitor, Mr. Lauer, has been utterly fantastic. I don't think he'll ever be given all the credit for everything he did behind the scenes to ease a lot of very important issues through this county, so I can't say enough good about Phil. And it's been an absolute pleasure, and I really, from the bottom of my heart, I probably will never wind up in government again. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity, but I think I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't also note one thing, and the reason that I'm here today, because I took this job somewhat reluctantly, because I'd had a rough experience in government once before as a vendor. When I met John Brown, I took the job based on the fact that John seemed to me to be a man of absolute integrity and probably just one of the smartest organizational people I have ever met by a long shot. And I've worked for a lot of places. I've worked for places that had 250 lawyers in it, and I've worked for places that had 10. I haven't seen anybody who had the organizational mindset that he had, and I, I think in closing, this is the last time I'll do it for you all, I'd just like to tell you, you had a hell of an executive here.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like, I'd like... It's, it's not a speech, I just wanna give thank you to just this council, prior councils. I, I know there's always a lot of partisan bickering that goes on, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Mr. Heckman, Mr. Sifee's not here, Scott Parsons, Bob Warner, when, when I was running four years ago, wherever we were, if we ran into them, we could always ask them questions, and you know, I know Mr. Sifee had me over his house, you know, and again, and then we were running against each other, I wasn't on council yet, so... Current council, Mr. Warner, has become a friend, and as much as he might not agree with it, so has Mr. Kraft.
I, I had the pleasure, when we had our meeting over at the Steel Stacks, after the meeting,
I got to spend some time with Mr. Kraft in a, in a personal level, and you know, you all know what has gone on in my life in the past two years. I saw a side of Mr. Kraft that I, I, I don't see up here, and, and this, this is a, this is a persona. You know, when we leave the dais, we're actually, you know, on, on good speaking terms, so it is, it is nice, and I have met a lot of great people, and I will never forget this experience, no matter where I end up. So thank you.
And in closing, I'll just say it's been an honor and a thrill to, to serve with you all, and I would just say that there are second acts in government, right, Peg? So I, I would just tell you all, you know, never close the door, you'll, you'll never know when it, when opportunities may present themselves, you to get back at, at some level of government, 'cause I, I have enjoyed my time serving with you, and I hope you will continue to serve the citizens of Northampton County.
And I would just like to say too, thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you and making new friendships, and it's, so I hope it continues, and, and I hope we see some of you come back.
And I'd like to say, I know Peg has her purse ready and her coat on and everything, and she wants to go home to dinner, but you know, it's, it's been fun, guys, you, you've made my life a living hell. But it's all, you know, I mean, you had your, you had your positions, and I, I respect your positions, although I never agreed with them, but you know, we did, we did try to move government forward, and thank you all for putting the time in and putting yourself out here to do this, 'cause you know, you know it's not fun when you're here on this side of it. So thank you.
Okay. With that, we have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Geisinger, seconded by Mr. Bennell. Meeting is adjourned. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. Have, have, have a happy Kwanzaa, everybody. Best wishes, happy holidays.